Yeah. Yeah, what's the point of letting people?
Yeah.
And like, see it's a, they can prevent anything from that. So, you've got your, you don't want to. Add that to your, whatever. Oh, well, it's.
I can't even imagine.
Oh. It's so important that a man who's a witness, has four years in common. Now, in general, kind of, all, John. But for, but for ads, it's just.
How are you?
I've been harassing. Yes, oh, go ahead. Take the number.
Ads and lots of, it adds in a lot of, you know, so, it's okay, not complaining, just, you know, as a matter of fact. Of course, I know, good. Mary.
Thank you, this is a, a public hearing. To consider Cliffs County 2030 General Plan update and associated environmental impact report. The general plan provides guidance to reach a future vision 20 years or more out into the future. Addressed by the 2030 General Plan update are land use decisions relating to housing, natural agriculture, expansion of county road systems, development of recreation resources, promotion of recreation, and other goals and policies that will guide future decisions throughout the incorporated areas of Cliffs County. For three items, we'll consider adopting a resolution that the Cliffs County Board of Supervisors certifying the environmental impact report prepared for the 2030 General Plan in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and the county's local guidelines and authorize the chair to sign. We'll consider adopting a resolution that the Cliffs County Board of Supervisors from adopting findings of fact and a statement of overriding considerations for the 2030 General Plan and authorize the chair to sign. And as in three is consider adopting a resolution that the Cliffs County Board of Supervisors adopting the Cliffs County 2030 General Plan and authorize the chair to sign. This is a public hearing and I will have staff brief us, and then we will open the public hearing. Good afternoon, Chair, welcome to the board.
I'm very pleased to be here for you this afternoon. Uh, we are, I'm here after two and a half, close to three years. And, uh, I think, uh, then I would introduce, as you know, Ben Ritchie and Beth Rockton from Novo, uh, are consultants on this process. And, uh, and this is what we've done a lot of hard work for, and, uh, and what we're here today to do is, as you read, uh, is to consider several actions and, uh, and hear from the public. Uh, and what I'd, uh, I'm just, I'll, I'm gonna turn it over to the Novo. I, I've got nothing more to say about this, they've, it's been a lengthy process, and they'll give a, like them, that they'll give you a brief, uh, presentation to show you what we've, uh, been through and what we've done. Uh, I should say, it's, that's how we make, this has been a positive process. And, and when, when they go on to get the, their other, uh, general flag, whether they're rich, they would look back and think very kindly. So, uh, Ben, go ahead.
See, do you have the lights a little bit? Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and Supervisors. We are, we're equally pleased to be here that this has been an excellent road and excellent journey, and, uh, we've all been an excellent client for this, for this process and product. Um, this is how it's supposed to work, so, thank you for that. It's, uh, truly been a joy to have in the case. So, very briefly today, what I'd like to go over, um, I'll provide a quick summary of the recommended actions taken by the board at this hearing. I'll provide a brief overview of the general plan and EIR, public review and comment process. I'll summarize the comments received on the general plan and EIR during the public comment period. And a quick summary of the proposed changes to the draft 2030 General Plan. In essence, what has changed or what were proposed action since the version that we have. So, uh, there's just some minor points that were included in the staff report. So, uh, just a quick summary, the recommended actions today is receive an update on the general plan and EIR. Review and consider the comments received and the proposed changes to the draft 2030 General Plan. Review and consider the draft EIR and the final EIR. Consider the planning commission's resolution recommending EIR certification and adoption of the general plan as well as the findings of fact. Uh, and then the meat and potatoes, adopt the 2030 General Plan inclusive of changes provided in staff report, and that's the kind of data in staff report. Certify the final EIR as adequate to the secret, and adopt the secret findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. This is a familiar looking slide, hopefully. Um, we have just been advancing the progress of green boxes, so we find ourselves there at the last step. As you've heard me say throughout this process, getting to the general plan update involved extensive public participation, and the process is a, a huge part of the final five. So, we began with visioning workshops, we've all flagged them and locations throughout the county. Um, we had pretty good turnout for those. We completed the existing commission report for the background report, it's at the stage for the issues that we've addressed. We prepared issues and opportunities to report, sort of, nutches down our path towards what the policy focus of the general plan update would be. Then in works with the steering committee, we developed the general plan goals, policies, and programs, the fourteen documents, so to speak. That was hashed out to steering committee, uh, workshops with planning commission and this board, and that led us to stage five, which is the draft general plan. Which turned out for a sixty day public review period concurrent with the environmental impact report, which required the California Environmental Quality Act. And here we are, stage seven, for general plan adoption. And the, uh, planning commission has already heard this spiel and given a blessing and recommendation to move forward with adoption of plan and certification of EIR. Just a very brief summary of our public outreach, because at the beginning of this process, this board is related to us, the, how critical public input and public consensus and consideration of what probably is in around this process was. So, as I mentioned, we started with a series of visioning workshops throughout the county, had good participation. We had a number of one-on-one stakeholder interviews, so service providers, utility districts, school districts, spoken locally. So, we really tried to get out into the community to a lot of getting news and forums. You'll recall, we had a, an extensive period where members of the public, and particularly property owners, who could submit land use map change requests. So, we did this for a couple of months, and then the board's direction yielded a backup for a couple of more months. We had ample opportunity for the public to, uh, provide info on the land use map. We had excellent experience working with the general plan steering committee. I believe we had a total of nine meetings with the steering committee, and we developed a handout on policy direction, and then reviewed and built the draft policy set of new public draft, uh, plan. We had a number of workshops and meetings with this board, as well as with the planning commission, some of these were story committee groups, and there was a number of time, and we were doing a great review of public appearance. And we also had an extensive information dissemination program. We did a series of newsletters, we maintained and still maintain the general plan update website. TAN over the planning department, compiled and managed email database, so lots of email, two percent of that process, and a number of requests were listed in the public. So, we'll get very briefly to the public review and comment period. The draft 2030 general plan and the draft EIR were released concurrently through a sixty day public review period, which began on November seventeenth, two thousand and eleven. Comment period closed on January sixteenth of this year. And both documents were made available via multiple methods. They were available electronically on the general plan website, they were distributed electronically via email. There was direct mail to key stakeholders and key state and local agencies. Hard copies were made available through local libraries, and hard copies were also available for review and checkout, and we tried to make access to the plan very good. A total of five comment letters were received on the content of the 2030 draft, uh, draft, uh, general plan. We received some comments that were directed on the EIR, and some comments that were directed specifically to the general plan itself, couple of the comment letters, such as my poll. So, the five letters, uh, addressing the contents of the general plan itself came from the Cliffs County Resource Conservation District, the California Department of Transportation, Caltrans, City of Calusa, Caluselapco, and, uh, Terence Coop, who represented and, and which is up in the Princeton area. Each comment letter received, uh, a written response was prepared by staff and consulting team, and these are all included in the opinion's D, which staff report. These are all the comment letters in their entirety, and we've done a written comment response to these addresses, and just concern to respond to these comments. I don't want to go through all of the proposed general plan changes. Um, I will summarize that they all included in appendix A of the staff report. We've done it in an underlying strike through format, so new text is added to the policy for an introduction section in underlined format, called new text, to show the strike through. It's pretty easy to displace the policies exactly how this changed. Uh, the proposed changes in your staff report today include input that was received from the planning commission on the March twelfth meeting on this issue. So, we did receive some direction from the planning commission on edits, and those were reflected in your staff report. And I do want to emphasize that overall, the changes in your staff report are quite minor. Um, they were made to provide additional clarity, remove some redundancy, eliminate some minor inconsequences. But the overall direction and intent of the general plan and what was good about the steering committee and what went off the public review, we're not showing. So, uh, again, we've addressed moderate comments, but the overall direction is to get altered goals, vision, policy direction of the general plan. And in this context, uh, again, we rate our recommendations of the board accept the proposed changes to the general plan, as shown in the opinion's D of the staff report. About the 2030 general plan, inclusive of these changes. Next, I want to touch briefly on the final EIR. You may have heard me mention previously, the term draft and final EIR, we've raised this already. The draft EIR is the meeting phase of the whole reading analysis of an author by the period. The final EIR is the document that actually formed and certified, which includes copies of all of the comment letters received on the draft EIR. Written responses to each of these letters, uh, minor revisions to the text of the draft EIR. And then the draft EIR is incorporated by references to the final EIR, so it's inclusive of that, of that whole analysis. Uh, none of the comments received on the draft EIR challenged the accuracy of the environmental analysis, and in our recommendations, the most certified final EIR has adequate.
All right. I think that's worth noting, the lack of, the lack of challenges to, to it, so, very well done.
Thank you, there was some, yeah, the, the comments I would consider mine in terms of seeing the comments, and none of them challenged the accuracy of the analysis.
Right, I mean, the legal challenge under accuracy of analysis is the number one way to undo all the work that you all have done, so it's important to note. If you could have without any, so, thank you very much, very well done, appreciate that.
And then procedurally, on the, uh, tail end of the EIR, uh, required secret findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. So, secret of the California Environmental Quality Act requires Calusa County, who serves as the lead agency for the EIR, to, one, make written findings, one, approve a project for which an EIR was certified, and, two, identify overriding considerations for significant unavoidable impacts identified in the EIR. These findings are a separate document in your packet. Um, they explain how the county approved the significant impacts identified in the EIR. And the statement of overriding considerations identifies the economic, social, technological, and other benefits of the project that override any significant environmental impact that would result. We prepared the general plan to be a self-mitigating document, to the extent that that's possible. So, what we ended up with is not an EIR that has an extensive list of mitigation measures that can apply to your plan after it's been adopted. Where we found that build-out over the next twenty years within the county might have an economic or an adverse environmental impact, such as increased traffic over the next thirty years. There's policies in the general plan that address these impacts to the best degree possible. So, what you have is a largely self-mitigating general plan, which will make it much more user-friendly and reduce the need to consult multiple documents as you're doing subsequent development review. Basically, the rules and the requirements are laid out in the general plan, and there's very little to no need to cross-reference the EIR, um, in terms of mitigation. And that concludes our formal presentation at this point, and so we will open it up for comments, questions, discussions, and more.
Those visioning workshops, what were the dates of those? I'm just trying to think, that kind of year and half ago, how long ago was that?
It was fall of '09, so, I couldn't give you the exact date, this September, I don't remember, two thousand and nine.
And, 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 uh, there was about one month, about eight months, nine months.
So, we started in '74, I mean, Maxwell, Williams, Calusa, Parla, so, total of five.
I was just trying to get the timeline, I was thinking back, because everything ran fairly smooth, and, and, and my comment is that I, I remember going to one or two of those, and we weren't allowed to be involved, you know, with, sitting back. And I just thought, I was very proud of, of staff, of you guys doing such a good job, they didn't have a hundred phone calls like I thought I would have, I didn't have, we were cornered in restaurants, you know, we, this process, you know, you guys were very fair. And I really compliment all of you, all of you guys, and, 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 so, again, I thought I'd be more involved, but I didn't really have to be, it was kind of strange. Other than just making little comments here and there, or, you know, I mean, it was, to me, it was really kind of strange, whole process, that's the other one, so.
Well, thank you, and our experience was that the residents and citizens in Calusa County, they came out informed, educated about the process, they came with open minds and open ears. So, they listened to harsh spiel about what we were here to do, and then responded with very insightful, well-thought-out, articulate suggestions on how they wanted to craft the vision for the next twenty years in this county. So, our job was amazingly eased by, you can vote, we got, not only the steering committee, but the public, all right, yeah, we got.
Well, the way you overscribed those meetings was, uh, well done, you know, they were forced, or, basically, you know, you forced, forced input out of everyone, you know, which, uh, was well done.
Uh, so, just, what, what record supervised the band, supervised the choir, and all the visioning. And, uh, that was, uh, they had that connection with the board, and, uh, and then the other board members attended, uh, as, as they could, and then their district, so. But having that connection was a positive, but it was, it was more important to have, and, uh, and, uh, we received the participation of the citizenry in the process. This is their job, and, uh, and you're right, I would be easily encouraged, but, uh, worse, but yes, and Ben, uh, and Beth, uh, this was all should have been, that, uh, the formula was to get the, uh, uh, public to participate and respond, to ask the questions, to voice their opinion, and if they didn't, started out, uh, Ben and Beth had a series of questions to instigate that, you know, and so, and as I kind of, and.
Well, and you made the atmosphere comfortable, so people didn't feel, um, intimidated or shaming or embarrassed, or, you know, they knew their comments and thoughts, um, were all, um, I think by, you know, forcing us to the back seat, so to speak, to help with one of the guest moves. And, you know, we were there with some, uh, for, so, it was very well done, and there's no acting member at least, so. One, one of the most painful sides I've been involved in. That's not, it's not.
Yeah. Again, I had a whole phone call, people screaming at us.
Well, we requested some unique items too. I remember we pushed along a few of the areas in this general plan, um, that were pretty county-centric, had to do with issues that we were dealing with currently. Uh, but I think other counties potentially, but we were just, and things, in very creative, creative ways, so. Outside of, seeing you guys in court, you have two years of, right?
Okay. We're, we're, I think, I, I think most of the, most of the experience, I, I think we've really taken a couple of input and pulled that together into a plan that really reflects the, the interest and the desire of the county to be, um, I can, so, really pleasing people, and I think that's why he has lots of, because of that vision, and, you know.
You can hear the report, forward right to the public.
That's the extent of our, uh, of our.
Okay, well, at this point, I will open the floor of, uh, public hearing, comments, uh, regarding the, uh, 2030 general plan update. Point one, point five. Okay, I will close this public hearing. Any comments, uh, from board members, if you're ready?
I go for the last twenty years.
No, I think I've a little show shot, I've got a little surprise, and I think this is my breakdown of history, so, as the public comments are actually general plan, EIR, and the state of this, so, uh, we'll take a note down, how long that public comment period lasted when we get here later. No, I mean, just to echo what I said before, I mean, you all know my level of comment for general plans, and, uh, your team could not have made this, uh, worse move, or more collaborative effort, had, had, had to try. So, I, you know, I know, at the beginning, I knew we made the right choice, and choosing, and, 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 you all could have, with, with, with our ends, and, you know, what kind of really wanted to see in a common letter of law, so. Well, then, thank you.
No, I, I'd say, I'm, I'm curious to see, if they had a bid to begin, going through this process, be twice as much, I think. Yeah, see, twice as much, you know, you know, good job, and, and, it's not always easy to go through the process, because, you know, and, and, everything's, I like to self-mitigate, you know, the way you did, you did this. I guess you kind of looked yourself out, and I was really impressed with it, so, you know, I'm a voice, I'm like, um, I just thought I would, I shouldn't have said.
As far as, uh, I, since I haven't got this, uh, Thursday last weekend, I did, I did find, I don't, I don't really all my, um, concerns for a restaurant or the, of those changes. I think you guys have looked at the list of, those areas of concern.
Sure, a couple of, uh, on the side of the billies, things we may have wanted to discuss earlier. The only issue that we grappled with, that the steering committee includes a consensus on as far as the steering committee's direction, is whether or not to require mitigation for the loss or conversion agricultural lands that were changed to a non-agricultural use. Um, in discussions of this, uh, with the steering committee, it was determined that the policies in the general plan are exceedingly strong as far as protecting agricultural lands, and there's a very high burden that must be met before an agricultural parcel can change to a non-agricultural use. And to that end, the general plan does not include the requirement for replacement mitigation, if ag lands are converted. Some jurisdictions require this, uh, it's not mandated by state law, and it's up to the county to determine what their best approach is for produce a county. But your plan as written right now does not require one or more, two of them, mitigation replacement for ag land conversion. The counterpoint to that, while there's not mitigation requirement in place, the burdens to meet in order to convert an agricultural parcel to a non-agricultural use are very high. It needs to be adjacent to urban development, it needs to have infrastructure immediately available, uh, external infrastructure across neutral development. And, uh, one of the other key criteria that we put in place was that we provide additional flexibility with steering economic development opportunities to allow agricultural industrial support uses on ag parcels that are in need of the general plan and move to industrial agricultural parcel. So, landlords have tremendous flexibility as far as agricultural support operations that they can implement on the lands that designate to be used to leverage agricultural land. So, those were the primary mechanisms we put in place that would counter the need to have an ag mitigation requirement. And then one other thing I would point out was we also came up with the urban reserve area land use designation, which provided that sort of placeholder for the whole ag transition designation that you have, and shows where future urbanization around the existing communities can take place, and identifies what needs to happen before that urban reserve parcel can change to commercial or agricultural parcel. And so, there's a specific set of material that was provided, I think, if you will, of future lands that would get preferential treatment for urbanization if it's in the. Excellent point, and as Beth pointed out, we have actually H G one A in the general plan, which is an action item to monitor the rate of conversion of agricultural lands. So, while the urban is high to change an ag parcel to a non-ag use, we can, we will be monitoring and we find that see the conversion, but you're on your comfort level, and it's time to go back and revisit the question of do we need a mitigation requirement for the ag use? That's something you can address on down below, but the monitoring of agricultural conversions is an action item.
Is there anything else?
One other thing, one other thing we made, one to discuss was, um, as it stands right now, the general plan allows, would they condition a lease permit for the commercial production of energy on agricultural parcels? So, the, the production of energy on agricultural parcels is addressed in two ways in the general plan. One is as a support use to the existing onsite operations, so for example, five acres of solar to support plant operations, that's a onsite energy production from site uses. Commercial is considered a big scale, where you're selling it back to a grid, and that's the primary purpose, so you probably give it a hundred, if not thousands, a year. Commercial is considered a big scale, where you're selling the back to grid, and that's the primary purpose, so you probably give it a hundred to five thousand acres of, you know, in solar, for example, if there's places in western county where it is feasible, um, and other types of biomass as well. So as it stands now, the general plan allows these uses, conditional, with a conditional use permit, on ag designated parcels. Do not need to have an industrial designation in order to embark upon this type of product. This is an issue we expect to get into in more detail, uh, with the zoning code, with the various standards on the land energy production, the, the sort of performance standards they would need to meet. And I know Steve, uh, asked some ideas on whether we could ultimately go down the road as far as energy production overlay, um, zones, something to stir up and develop. But as it stands now, energy production on ag parcel would be allowed in the general condition. Yes, and, and that's one of the action items in the general plan, to develop a specific zoning designation that would apply to, to, to this type of product.
And so, who, that actually was, I think, I think, for those two items. As far as a conditional use permit, is that something that the board does, or is this, is that a ministerial kind of zoning part?
Yes, that's not going to spend, uh, in this year, that's, uh, that's discretionary, and then it goes through the planning commission for the decision, and that will be approved, and then, uh, field to come to the board.
To the legislature. All right, I'm still happy to study that.
And it anticipated that when these zoning industry gets developed, girl, there's just some good standards, it may not be perfect for every single agricultural parcel to have a designation applied to it, so there would be some process that would determine where is the perfect to do commercial, so it would, it would, it would just be, um, you know, I don't even, you say it.
Sure, just kidding. Yeah, I mean, and there are, I mean, this is such a hot topic, state one now, and it's concerned, and that's one of the reasons why I would actually, that I brought you, uh, opposed, uh, uh, board's addresses again. And currently, right now, there's a, there's a AB twelve point two, uh, in the legislature that, uh, is a, uh, one of the ones going to, uh, take some of the authority away from potentially down these common cities and, and, and control, uh, solar development, and it's being imposed by, uh, 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 but, uh, this is something, there are, right now, as you heard, Ben, there are protections to protect agriculture, I mean, some of which you can't commit, you can't open up, uh, uh, a commercial operation on ag, like they make for ag production. But, but it's allowed, okay, it is allowed for this, uh.
Well, that's, that's just my concern with this, uh, you know, it's kind of like opening up, and the box to, you know, this big energy firm coming here and taking large losses, and that's, that's obviously.
Because it's a legislative permit, it's not an administrative, I mean, it actually has to come to management and or us.
Uh, that's, I mean, I believe.
One thing I will throw in here real quick is any project on a commercial scale would undoubtedly do require to prepare a sequel documentation. And almost certainly that would be in the form of EIR, because once we get into commercial scale energy production, it's much more difficult to, to make that, to actually make that good. So regardless of the discretionary approval process for the conditional use permit, or the, or the planning commission, I believe procedurally, the EIR in Colusa County needs to come before the board. And once the sequel process starts, now the board has a hand in determining whether or not to certify the EIR for the project. And that's where you get to determine if it needs your standards, are there adequate mitigation measures for the loss of agricultural land? And just because the ag mitigation approach is spelled out one way, and the general plan doesn't mean that other major projects can't have additional mitigation placed upon them to make sure they're compatible with surrounding land uses. So I don't want to leave the impression that the board would be hand-tied as far as these commercial projects coming in and not having to cross your desk to make sure that it's done correctly to the board's satisfaction. The sequel process provides you an avenue to, uh, have a say as these projects and processes.
Well, I guess I'm just concerned about, you know, just lock stop saying, everybody, come on in to Colusa County, because we'll, we'll take in all, um, you know, large-scale energy, uh, cons, energy projects, and, and that's, we are an ag county, and so, um, I think selectively, possibly, it makes sense, but I'm concerned with the statement that's so broad that says that we'll allow any sort of commercial, um, development of these projects in our county is, is advertising maybe, maybe something I don't want, maybe the rest of them does, but that's not my concern.
I think that's actually the point, and, and that's something that I, I just, just heard this afternoon, I was about talking to Ben, and Ben about, but, uh, this is why, one of the ideas that, uh, we've come to the board about is to give the direction, to move forward on a, on a, uh, a policy approach to a, this, uh, energy park overlay zone in the county that will encompass the entire county and do the sequel work. But within that, that text, what you just said, be selective, where it would provide guidance to anyone coming in that wanted to set up, uh, say, a commercial, uh, uh, type of alternative sustainable, uh, renewable energy plant, it would direct them where it's appropriate based on the board's desires and, uh, and where it wasn't, and there would be a set of criteria to meet within each of those areas. So if it were already zoned industrial or an area that the board had designated, uh, to, to, for future natural growth, then that would be more appropriate. Uh, but, but there would be, by the very nature of these, it would protect agriculture, because it would clearly state, these are areas, these kinds of soils, uh, that are fine, and, and, whatever, uh, that is inappropriate to, uh, oppose a commercial type of operation.
I think we have a lot of industrial zone property within the county, so it's not like we're kind of limited on all sorts of acres, so, this protection ag.
Well, protecting agriculture, I mean, you will find both in the current general plan, and certainly in this one, uh, that is, uh, probably directly, I think, the focus of this general plan. I know I told a number of people inside and outside the family that, uh, the life of this plan over the next twenty years, come twenty thirty, I'm convinced, I'm confident, that, uh, if you were to fly over twenty thousand pieces of land, and, uh, there'll be an example of green, uh, in Alcoa Colusa County that's still in agriculture, despite what goes on elsewhere.
Well, we have to take these policies in here. Do, do we take each one of these separately, or? Yeah.
I would, I would recommend, for speed early and for clarity of the record, that, um, A one, A two, and A three, we take and have separate motions.
I just, you know, I would like to, uh, also thank Ben and Beth for tolerating, uh, my own calls, and meeting with various kinds, and, uh, being ready to meet with, 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 with little words like sustainable use, without the thought. I appreciate that, you know.
Well, not a word search, by the way. It would be much easier if I had this on my laptop to search sustainable, not. Are they all on?
They've, they've creatively stricken.
Find and replace the use.
Yeah, but a variety of different other words, I don't know, but anyway, thank you very much. Um, I'm not seeing any of the, like, new maps, where, I know one thing I had was, uh, the, 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 the Delavan map had a little word to it, and wondered if you were able to use it.
We were, thank you for, uh, reminding me about that. This is a side-by-side of the original Delavan map that is, this pink is, uh, world service center, so it's a, it's a very unique Colusa County land use designation that we, we, we found, right? And so, uh, I think it exists in a limited capacity in the site's area and Delavan Beach, that's about it as far as places where it pops up in the county. Um, it would, it provides for a variety, in the dog, and a variety of commercial, industrial, residential entrances, uh, provides a lot of flexibility. The original Delavan map is shown on the left, uh, the black lines are just different ways to go to return dollars, you can see it has some kind of hopscotch mist to it and non-congruous. And so we revised it to just sort of provide a cleaner blocked off area of, of Delavan, and be more reflective of the conditions on the ground, and, uh, how that community might change, which would be a, or so, slightly, for a small size. So, uh, I think we hopefully addressed the, in terms of the revised Delavan map, and that would be included in the general plan, but by all.
No, thank you. And was there, was, you know, was that necessary?
Yeah, so we blocked it off, and we, uh, our engineering has to.
No, for signature. Thank you. Okay. Well, with that, on item one, we're considering adopting a resolution of the board and board supervisors adopting, uh, certifying the environmental impact report. Correct one. Prepare for the twenty thirty general plan in accordance with California environmental law, the act, and now we still take a value.
Yep. I'll move. Just gonna sit.
Moved by Van, second by Emberg, in the other discussion. Roll call.
Supervisors and jurors, on Carter, I, Dan, I, Marshall, I, and Devon.
Aye, that's a five vote. Item two, consider adopting a resolution of the board and board supervisors adopting the findings of fact in a statement of overriding considerations for the twenty thirty general plan. Lord, your board, moved by Carter.
Sir.
Second by Emberg, in the special. Roll call.
Supervisors and jurors, on Carter, I, Dan, I, Marshall, I, and Devon.
Aye, that's a five vote. Number right at three, consider adopting a resolution of the board and board supervisors adopting the twenty thirty general plan and overriding the chair's line. Moved by Carter, second by Emberg, in the end of the discussion.
So did I want to strike policy on too much too? No?
No. Good pointy.
Self-niggaing, uh, it's been said time again, and I, it is very well done. We're all on.
Supervisors and jurors, on Carter, I, Dan, I, Marshall, I, and Carter.
Aye, that's a five vote. Item four, now discussion. We didn't forget this, regarding the waiver of the county clerk filing fees in the amount of dollars to file the notice of determination after certain, if, certification of EIR of the twenty thirty general plan. So. Moved by Carter, second by Emberg, in the special. Roll call.
Supervisors and jurors, on Carter, I, Dan, I, Marshall, I, and Devon.
Aye, that's one vote. Does anybody else have anything more to go with yours, Steve?
Oh, thank all of you, and, and, I was really, it's been a very positive process, and, and, and especially of you that, of those that aren't here that are really responsible, ask, uh, for this case, so, thank you.
With that, anything else?
Yes. Well, Mr. Chairman, we have a few more close sessions where we have.
Yeah, and I didn't come to be back on yet.
Yeah, okay, I think we should, you know, a lot of your, but, uh, we definitely have one September ten. All right, we're on the count.
What are you doing?
Stay busy.
You can make a motion to reconsider what you said on the floor.
Well, we didn't, we just gave correction, we didn't, uh, uh, earlier.
Well, you didn't make a motion, that's correct, you gave a consensus, correct.
Now, who does it, item twenty nine eight?
Thank you very much.
We've seen plenty more.
Yes, went to some more.
You're gonna start. Start, but you're done.
Thanks, thank you.
Supervisors and jurors, on Carter, I, Dan, I, Marshall, I, and Devon.
Aye, that happens to bring it up.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Nameable to RCRs.
What are they, how they invoice you?
Okay, moved by Van, second by Emberg, roll call.
Supervisors and jurors, on Carter, I, Dan, I, Marshall, I, and Devon.
Aye, that's a five vote. Now, uh, we have two items, uh, in closed session to report out on, council.
Yes, so Mr. Chairman, members of the board, closed session, item D, conference with labor negotiator Bob Newzark pursuant to government code section five hundred ninety-five seven point six, for the purpose of instructing his representatives regarding negotiations with the Department of Management Coalition, Colusa County Deputy Shales Association, and the State Employees Association, and the Handoff Representative, there is no reportable. Item D, conference with labor negotiator Bob Newzark pursuant to government code section five hundred ninety-five seven point six, for the purpose of instructing his representatives regarding negotiations with IHSS employees, there is no reportable. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, council. Anybody else have anything? I'm good as you were. I'm Jared.
I, I would just like to say that, having been to the marine disorder, you know, a lot of, with ballot measures on land use, lawsuits over projects, lawsuits over the general plan, and all. It's been such a pleasure to come in, as I did on the panel with this private visiting council, and, uh, essential, smooth, good attitude toward the general plan, uh, it starts my faith in the process, having grown up in the old line of, you know, this.
And we're just convinced the niece that there's other industry besides agriculture.
I understand that.
Well, this is.
Not.
Yeah.
You wait, you wait until you have a briar, and you want to put solar, now I'm getting, yeah, you're about.
Well, this is Colusa now, I mean, you know.
Oh, yeah, I figured that. I can do it for my own, but nobody else can, you're not happy.
The niece is reading it now.
Yeah, well, it's up to the quarter of Megawatt.
I make more money at that than it's worth.
Yeah, there you go. You got a hundred acre solar plant out behind a backyard, yeah. That could be a different deal. Was that you? I just wish I had a hundred acres.